Good evening. Welcome to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board Meeting for August 20th, 2024. Will you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The upcoming meeting dates are September 17th, 2024, and October 15th, 2024. We have minutes for the meeting of July 16th, 2024. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd like to make an announcement. Treetop Development had been on the agenda for this evening. If anybody is here for that, I need to tell you, we have deferred that until the next meeting, at which time they will be making a full presentation. So the first item on the agenda for tonight is an adjourned public hearing for JFE Associates. Could I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
So last year before here, which was month before last, I know there were some concerns related to the parking and making sure there was adequate parking relative to existing uses and then the proposed uses on site. One of the things that the town traffic consultant had requested that we take a look and provide for a, an inventory of what's existing, what makes sense, and then what's, what's proposed and how it kind of impacts that, and any modifications we would have to make to the parking, you know, in terms of itself. So in this last submittal, we did prepare an analysis, parking analysis based upon what is there, what's proposed. In terms of where we're going, we're proposing a total of, I think it's just under 30 new spots based upon our numbers. That kind of outlines. So that would be our proposed parking area. We did, in front, we'd had some room relative to being in front of the batting cages, so we did provide for some additional spots up there to kind of make that count work. So that's, that's, that's really the extent of the last submission we had made to address those comments. I did receive another comment letter tonight regarding some of the concerns that are further there, and if I'd like to go over those, do you have copies of these?
No, you just haven't.
Yeah, we have not seen. So if you wouldn't mind maybe reading the comment and as well as your response, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
So parking requirements for the existing proposed site were provided and appear to be reasonable. So that sounds like we're in good shape there. A field review of the site indicates that a lot requires appropriate grading around the outer perimeter to achieve the proposed layout. All parking spots must be delineated with parking blocks or other approved delineation in order to ensure an orderly parking lot. So John, can you speak to, he actually picked up a number of railroad ties?
Yeah, I just, they're actually delivered the other day. I didn't, didn't know that, but I just purchased all railroad ties. They were used. The guy said I can get them for a good amount, a cheap amount, so I bought them all. They're there. I didn't move them because I didn't know if I was allowed to. So I didn't want to bring a machine in and start moving them to places and hurt myself on this part. So I have them there, ready to go. We did do delineation of separating the parking lot so that you know that they could park on both sides, because that was a problem that everyone would just like park in the middle and it would take enough spots. So we did all that work that you guys in the two months ago meeting said I could do that kind of stuff. So I did do that. That's already done. I don't think I've pictured. So that, that's what we're doing to separate that and the railroad ties are going to give you more spots on the other side so people could see it. And I guess you had said to me that you need to show that it's a spot. So that's why I got all that.
And so what is your plan to cut the railroad ties up to make them like parking blocks or you're going to?
Yeah. Well, yeah, because they only have to be like four feet there. But my guess would be there 10 feet, maybe there are eight feet, but somewhere around that. So I was going to cut them in half and put them on the spots.
Got it.
They're not now. They're in a pile right this second.
So I think, you know, I, I can report to you that since the last time we saw you here at the planning board, three of us, at least three of us have been out to the site to take a look at the parking and whether it was a problem or not. And I think in all cases, and there were at least four visits, we found no more than 20, maybe 25 cars at any one time. And one day, actually, the dome was, had a number of young ladies in there practicing softball. There were probably 30 kids and a dozen adults and no apparent parking problems. So I think with what you plan to do and with your analysis, I think you guys have probably come through fairly, fairly well, although I will leave it up to the other board members to comment or ask questions.
I agree. I was able to visit the site three or four times since last we saw you here, even tonight, I think, driving by. You can see there's, there's plenty of spots. The parking lot is maybe half full. And on the weekends, I was there, I think, in the mornings and once in the afternoon and didn't see any, any issues like John said.
Yeah, I haven't seen an issue with the parking.
Yeah.
And I can also agree. I visited the site three different occasions, both, you know, sometime in the morning, sometime in the afternoon, all different on each three visits. I saw no over, you know, overly amount of parking, you know, cars using spaces. So I felt very comfortable with.
Okay. That's great.
John, there were two, there were two more comments, I think.
Yes.
That I had, but I don't know if you want to read them or I can just say?
Yeah, I wasn't looking not to talk about, we just got two.
Sure, I'll discuss them. And the one was about the handicap parking. I mean, there's going to be, you know, an unloading or loading zone. And there was eight. I don't, Michelle, I don't know what the requirement is.
It's not that many. It's 105 spaces. You'd probably be about four total handicapped.
I mean, that's your discretion. I mean, if you think they're needed.
Yeah, well, we, I think we showed.
Eight.
Right. So we've got the four here, so we can always translate these to standard parking spots on the site.
Yeah, if that makes sense. And then I don't know whether, if, you know, obviously the, the bulk of the new parking is the fields, so it might be advantageous to put a couple of those spots to the other end of that.
What is that bigger?
What is that bigger?
No, it just has an unloading area.
Okay.
All right. But then they also have to be signed, right? And I didn't like.
Yeah, no, I know that, but I didn't know if it needed to be big, like wider or something.
No, they're the same size. It's just that it has that, you know, that unloading area.
Right.
And, you know, there's some, you know, maybe you could even put a little detail in the plan that just basically indicates the signs.
I mean, there's not a whole lot of loading and unloading going on, but we can, we can, I'm sure we can get on there somewhere.
Are you, I'm sorry, there was 95 spaces. Are you, are you at 105 or 95 spaces now in total?
We are, we are at existing 73.
Right.
We were, I was able to lay 105 in there.
Okay. So if you have 105, it's five spaces. If it's under 100, it's four. So.
All right, we're at 100.
The only thing which might affect the spaces is, you know, I think, again, maybe all the parking isn't needed or isn't going to be utilized at one time. But if in the event that it is, I do think that there's a need to be able to get a fire truck in there and around the lot. And there's, I know on the far end of the lot, there's a light pole, so it might need to eliminate a couple of those spaces on the end so that a fire truck could get in the entrance, go around the outer, and back out again.
All right, we can, we can lay that on there. I mean, we, we did get okay from the fire department. I don't think we got into that sauce of that, all that.
Right.
But, you know, it sounds like based upon the parking, the situation exists there now, close what we proposed, we can afford to maybe eliminate a few just to make that work. I think that's fair to say.
Yes.
And I think the other thing that we just would have to delineate is where the fire department would want egress, like you're not going to have any parking on, I believe, the drive-through entrance of the field.
Right.
So if we could just, you know, I know that you'll have to, you talked about this, possibly self-police it, but maybe we could put some form of like no parking there or, you know, again, like.
There's none in between the.
Like when you're driving in.
You know, the existing railroad ties, there's no, it's, it's so that you can go in and come out. There's.
But you know, right now, you don't have operation out there. So again, it's like people tend to pull up at the like path of.
Oh, I get what you're saying. You're saying that they shouldn't do it.
Yes.
Okay. We didn't plan on them doing it. So yes, they shouldn't do it. I understand that. I thought you were saying that we.
No, no.
We don't put parking there. We're not.
Yeah.
But I understand what you're saying. Don't let anybody park. Makes sense.
Was that the total of your comments?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments by our professionals or questions?
No, I just want to, because it's in the resolution, the number of ADA spaces. So will you bring it down to five then? I'm assuming you're not going to, you're not going to want to do eight if you don't need eight, right?
Five is fine.
Okay. So that needs to be modified when you read the resolution.
Got it. Will do. And anything, anything additional from our fire advisory board?
Okay. Are you talking about no park, I'm sorry, Rich, you talking about no parking signs along here? Just a.
Yeah, like when you drive into the complex, like when you first turn off 52 and start driving in, like the softball fields are going to be on both sides?
No, the other side is the fire department.
Yeah, but I'm saying sometimes people may have a tendency to park.
Oh, yeah. I'll put, I can put.
Like we, we don't want anybody.
I know what you're saying. I'm sorry. I meant the middle. I thought you meant the middle.
No, 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 I'm sorry. Like literally, when you turn off of 52 into the entrance. You know, like I'm saying, if you have activity there, people have a tendency, let me just pull off here and I'll.
Yeah, when you're coming down the entrance.
Like I think it makes, I think it makes sense where you're saying too, though, along where the fields are because.
Yeah, because when people get.
And people, you don't, you don't want people to back into another car. It makes sense that they don't park there.
That's what I, that's what I thought he meant. Yeah.
Right.
So both places, they shouldn't park.
Right. But you have plenty of parking at this stage. So I think it's easy just, I think it's like trying to map it out so people understand when they pull in there. Like we're talking about it now because we all understand it, but people just pulling in there, we want them to understand where to park and where.
Well, to be honest, when I put that middle barrier, it changed the whole game.
Sure.
Where they park. They used to just park right in the middle.
Yeah, well, he knows.
And when, when I put that up, I went out one day and was like, holy cow. Like it was like total different place. So I do agree with that. I will say that. So the signs will, that's easy.
So are there any members of the public who are here to speak to the project? Any other comments by board members or professionals? If not, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a resolution of site plan approval for JFE Associates, Empire State Huskies, care of John Knopf, 2528 Route 52, resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman, whereas the applicant is applying for a minor site plan amendment and an outdoor recreation development special permit to install two practice softball fields on the Gulf Dome site. And whereas the existing site plan shows 83 spaces and the proposed site plan shows 105, including five handicapped parking spaces. And whereas the parking requirement for the proposed uses totals 164 spaces, whereas per the special permit 194-67 Outdoor Recreation Developments, the planning board may grant relief from the parking requirements. And whereas the applicant has provided information to the planning board to demonstrate that the proposed 105 parking spaces provided is sufficient for the site and shall not adversely affect the traffic, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Town of East Fishkill. And whereas the applicant will provide a temporary backstop and temporary bench barrier at each field to prevent balls from leaving the field of play. Whereas the planning board held a public hearing for the proposed practice softball fields on May 21st, 2024, June 18th, 2024, and closed the public hearing on August 20th, 2024. Whereas the planning board determined that the proposed project is a type two project under CECL and no further CECL reviews required. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants an outdoor recreation development special permit and amended site plan approval as shown on the minor modification site plan for JFE Associates, prepared by M. Gillesbian Associates LLC and dated May 31st, 2023, and last revised 7/31/24, subject to the following conditions. Applicant to provide 105 parking spaces, five ADA compliant handicap parking spaces marked and signed, a 20-foot utility easement along the front of the parcel. The softball fields shall be used for practice only. No games or tournaments shall be held in the practice fields. Special permits must be renewed by August 20th, 2025, one year from the date of issuance to allow for review of parking and operations. The special permit may be extended if the planning board finds the operations of the softball fields does not adversely affect the traffic, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Town of East Fishkill. And escrow must be replenished prior to site plan signature. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
John, could I just ask, on number two, could we say minimum five? So that if you end up with six or whatever you end up with for the handicap spaces?
Certainly. And so, so where we amended the number of handicap spaces, we will just say a minimum of five ADA compliant handicap spaces.
I have one other. We also had a public hearing on July 16th, 2024. So we just add that date in the whereas clause.
Thought we didn't open it.
We didn't. We didn't open it on the 16th because the applicant was not available. So any further changes or amendment suggestions? If not, I'll take a second for that resolution.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying, oh, excuse me, we are going to do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donna Pepe.
Aye.
John Geovagnoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman. I'm an aye. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Appreciate your time and help on all of this.
Good luck.
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Gabriella Rose, Flori Gas Station, 1997 Route 52. This is a public hearing, so I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good evening. Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering. We're here tonight for a public hearing. This is the Gabriella Rose Site Plan Amendment. This is the John Jay Gas Station along Route 52. And we're here tonight for a couple of reasons. Number one, the relocation of an air station that's located in the back of the parcel next to the refuse enclosure. The applicant would like to bring it up front toward the front of the property, along Lake Drive, along with the air station, a vacuum station, and in doing so, ensuring parking would be free in that area to put up a limited parking time of a couple of minutes to make sure that those, those spaces are open. While we were making that amendment to the site plan, it was noted that there's an existing ice chest and propane cabinet along the northern property line, and that those, those two items didn't have a permit associated with them. So we had to go through the process of applying for a permit, and in doing so, they required a couple of variances. So this is a coordinated review with both the zoning board. So we're here tonight to open up the public hearing for comments related to this project. We did put a couple of notations on the plans. It's our late last meeting. We put some Ballard locations around the dumpster and around the ice chest and propane cabinet. And in addition, we heard that there was some, with our ZBA presentation at our ZBA public hearing, there was a concern regarding some, the maintaining of some grass behind the dumpster enclosure. So we added some notation to the site plan to ensure that the grass is maintained behind the dumpster. One of the other things that we heard from the public hearing with the ZBA was parking. It is a very busy site. There is some parking that's occurring along Lake Drive. People park temporarily, run into the store and come back out. There are no parking signs there, but we've, the applicant is, is, you know, is asking people not to do that, follow the enforcement of those, of those regulations that goes along with the original site plan. In talking to the applicant today, he is actively seeking to work with business owners on both sides of the street to lease additional spaces if possible. I believe right now we have an agreement with the property owner to the north for a couple of spaces. So we do realize that parking is, is an issue there during peak periods. I believe we're also having some influence from the parcel to the west with the construction that was going on. So temporarily, right now, the parking in that area is, is, is not a problem, but it's, during its peak period, it's there. So the applicant is aware of that. Other than that, we didn't make any other site revisions to the plan other than the Ballards and the maintaining of the grass area. So that's, that's our real update.
So I think with your statement about Ballards, you may have solved an issue that was raised by someone who sent in an email as a part of the public hearings from Mr. and Mrs. Alfred Cardinal. And they indicated they had some concern about the propane cage being so close to a parking area that was only separated by a fence with slats in it. And so I take it that Ballard, Ballards that you've indicated will save that, that propane tank cage. Excellent. And that really was his only comment and was not able to attend the meeting. Do you still have then the employee parking that you told us about at previous meetings that I think were what, six or seven spaces?
Yes.
Okay. And that, is that a fairly long-term arrangement?
Yes. So they're, they're seeking, if, if there's the ability, they'd like to seek additional spaces too, just because they know that parking is a premium out there. But, you know, for the record, we're not increasing any retail space with this project. The, the retail space remains the same. This was strictly just trying to add some additional cooler space for their frozen goods because the way the building's configured, sharing with Dunkin' Donuts, the cooler space on the, on the gas station site is, is relatively confined. So again, we're not, we're not increasing retail area.
Other questions and comments by board members?
Brian, you're not doing anything to try to resolve the flow issues in the site at all with the traffic there? I mean, especially if they're getting like a gas delivery. I mean, the place is a nightmare at that point.
Yeah, I, I talked to the applicant. They were going to try to have deliveries staggered off-peak hours to try to improve that situation during unloading periods. So the applicant's aware of it.
Any questions or comments from our professionals? None? Fire Advisory Board, are there any members of the public who would like to speak to the project? There apparently being none. I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have.
We have to do one thing. We also have to declare lead agency because I think, I believe we declared intent the last meeting.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to declare lead agency.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? So we're able to do the neg deck and the resolution this evening?
It's at the board's desire, yeah.
In the board's discretion, but if you go forward with the resolution, you should have some sort of provision in place that the applicant will have to come up with an off-site parking plan for employees subject to the satisfaction of the town attorney's office and the town engineer's office.
That's, that's, that's difficult.
Okay. All right. Negative declaration for Gabriella Rose amended site plan. This is an unlisted action. And I'll try to summarize this rather than read every word. The proposed action is an amendment to a site plan to install a new vacuum station, air station, and outside cooler at an existing gas station and convenience store on Route 52, and to gain approval for an existing gas propane exchange station and ice chest. The proposed action would require several area variances, but would not be expected to affect neighborhood character or the visual character of the site or the immediate area. The proposed action would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons. Number one, it will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles noise or emission levels. Number two, will not significantly affect rare and endangered species of animal or plant or habitat of such species. Number three, it will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources. Number four, it will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials. Number five, will not result in a significant effect on air, water quality, or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas. Number six, it will not be subjected to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards. Number seven, it will not have a substantial aesthetic effect. Number eight, it will not involve adversely affecting any surface water or groundwater. Number nine, it will not allow for improper uses within specified zoning districts. Number 10, will not result in adverse cumulative impacts. Number 11, it will not result in adverse growth inducing impacts. And number 12, it will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. This negative declaration was authorized at a meeting of the planning board of the Town of East Fishkill held on August 20th, 2024. And could I have a motion to approve this neg deck?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And the resolution, and I'll look to our, our council for, for that additional condition when I get to that. The name of the site plan is Gabriella Rose, name of applicant Gabriella Rose Limited, location 1997 Route 52, resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant is applying for a site plan amendment to install a new vacuum station, air station, outside cooler, and to gain approval for the existing gas propane exchange station and ice chest. And whereas to gain amended site plan approval, the following area variances from the zoning board of appeals would be required. Number one, 76-foot front yard variance for vacuum station. Number two, three-foot side yard variance for the vacuum station. Number three, 67-foot front yard variance for the air station. Number four, six-foot side yard variance for the air station. Number five, 10-foot side yard variance for the cooler. Number six, 10-foot side yard variance for the ice chest. Number seven, 10-foot side yard variance for the propane exchange cage. Number eight, 12% maximum lock coverage variance. Whereas the planning board declared lead agency for unlisted action on August 20th, 2024. And whereas the planning board adopted a negative declaration for the proposed action on August 20th, 2024. And whereas the planning board opened and closed a public hearing for the proposed action on August 20th, 2024. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants an amended site plan approval as shown on Gabriella Rose Limited amended site plan, prepared by Dan Stokosa Engineering PC and dated March 28th, 2024, and last revised 4/30/24, subject to the following conditions. Number one, zoning board of appeals approval of the required area variances listed above. And, and could I ask you?
Sure. And the property owner shall submit an off-street parking plan for employees subject to the approval of the town attorney's office and the town engineer's office.
Thank you.
Is there a minimum number of spaces we're requiring?
No, we'll review once Brian submits a plan. No, we'll review once Brian submits a plan.
So is it going to be all, all employees parked off-site?
I'll coordinate with them, but I believe we have, I believe the rear three spaces right now are designated employee and that reverts back to the original site plan.
And what's the maximum number of employees that would be there at any given time?
I'll talk to the applicant and I'll make sure that we coordinate that number directly with, with the town attorney, town engineer.
Okay. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a second for the resolution?
Second.
All in favor, oh, excuse me, we're going to do a roll call vote again, excuse me. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Mayoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John J. Vagnoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carrots. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is also you, Brian.
All right, I'll give, and excuse me, this too is a public hearing, so I will accept a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Please go ahead.
All right, I'll give you guys the public a brief overview of this. We've been in front of the board a number of months on this project. This is the Appalachian Estates, Shenandoah Lake Estates subdivision. It was created back in the late 70s. And during that filed map, the, the level of detail is not what it was like in today's subdivisions. We had 10-foot contours. We didn't have setbacks shown, house locations shown. We just had well and septic locations shown. Fast forward to 2024, the process is a little bit different, specific to plot plan generation. And as it relates to fill import, per the town code, the way the town code reads, 375 cubic yards of material is allowed debris brought in per site per calendar year. With this site and dealing with the health department and lots in the last 15, 20 years, there were errors on the original subdivision map specific to septic development and septic design. So as each individual lot came up for an extension for approval with the health department for their well and septic, we were asked to look at new designs, new soil tests to verify that the information on the original filed map was accurate. In doing so, this, this lot was subject to a redesign, which the original filed map had two foot of fill for the septic with the latest board of health approval, four foot of fill is required. So incorporating that design change as it relates to the original filed map, the grading is different. So in talking to the town planner, we wanted to update the subdivision map to show that increased grading. Again, that's related to the board of health. As we work our way up toward the house site, the lot does fall off from Appalachian West toward the south. There is a pretty significant drop as you work in about 30 to 40 feet. It drops about 10 feet in elevation. In doing so, we designed the house to have a full walkout basement, so we're actually stepping the house down as it follows grade. We've limited this house to a three-bedroom max, so we limit that fill import because we're obviously sensitive to our neighbors and truck traffic. And working with the board, our last revision, we tightened up the grading around the house and we actually extended the foundation walls down so we don't have as much fill coming in around the walkout area. So our total import around the house area is 876 yards. If we look back to the septic area, the original design was about 1,000 yards and with the board of health update, it's around 1,300 yards. It's my understanding that the, the fill for the septic area is not part of that 375 yards to be brought in. So basically, we're here tonight just to update the original subdivision map to show this, this, this new grading scheme and show that we're meeting current standards with, with the health department. The one thing I did do that, just to give everybody perspective, because we're in a subdivision that is older and has homes around it, I tried to provide a colored overlay that kind of shows where our house will be in perspective to the houses to the north and south. Let me see if I can zoom in here. So here, here we, I just, I threw a little bit of color on it with the, with the aerial just to show how we line up with the house to the, to the north and south. Again, we pushed this, we pushed this front load garage all the way up to that front satback line and then we, we have our construction moving back. If you can see, we're, we're almost in line with, with the existing home sites there. I did, I showed the grading in red just to give you perspective on where it would fall in relation to those existing home sites. Other than that, I think this, this gives a good representation of, of the development here. As far as drainage goes, everyone's, you know, sensitive to drainage and runoff, especially with the increased intensive storms we've had. So we've gone, gone ahead and designed a fully engineered swale to carry any runoff away from, from the project site and down to the lowest part of the lot. It's an engineered swale, it'll be riprap lined, it'll have check dams in it to slow velocity down. Other than that, as far as construction goes, this construction will be, it'll, it'll work its way from the bottom of the lot up top. So a sequence of events was the, the septic system would be installed first. As we would install the septic system, we would line the, line the side slopes with a jute mesh to ensure that, you know, once it's completed or during construction, as we work our way up the hill, it's stabilized to be sensitive to our neighbor. Once the septic stabilized, we'd move up to the house site and begin our, our construction around our footings and our foundation walls. So there's been a fair amount of coordination with the town engineer on how to develop the site and making sure we, we follow set of negotiation control guidelines. And that's, that's really it in a nutshell.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members?
Yeah. Brian, what, what's the elevation of the houses on either side? So I see that the houses kind of in line, but is it the same height or is it going to be lower, higher?
So all of these sites drop off from the town road. So from Appalachian West, all of these homes sit lower because they were falling off on grade. Elevation wise, we're probably five feet to seven feet lower than Appalachian West, which is in line with our neighbors to the north and south. I think our neighbor to the north, they're maybe five or six feet below, below the town road. And then as you, as you go up Appalachian West, the grade actually starts to come, come up a little bit, so it's, it's relatively in line.
So you're not out of line from a height perspective either? You're in line with the, okay.
Right. They should, they should fall, they should fall in line.
Okay. Same for the backyard where the septic is or is that going to be mounded as compared to the neighboring yards?
I, I, I believe the, the neighbor to our south may have had a fill system, but it was feathered in, not look as much of a mound. Looks like our neighbor to the north, it looks more of an in-ground or feathered in fill area. Ours is going to be more of a pronounced mound system. And that's, that's from the health department.
Other questions or comments?
Where does the fill come from?
The fill, the fill comes through, sand and gravel fill comes from local quarry. It's got to be a specific, a specific sand and gravel mix that's health department approved. Fill for around the site will be local. In, in these circumstances where we have larger fill imports, we usually coordinate with the town engineer and have a chain of custody of where we're getting the material. There's usually like a pre-application meeting with the applicant and town engineer where we sit there and go, okay, where are you getting your fill from? Let's make sure it's approved and have some kind of chain of custody so we don't have construction debris coming in from yonkers.
And how many truckloads is that going to be?
We're about 870 yards for the house. They'll be over the course of time. I mean, you figure 20, you know, 20 yards per truck. Same thing with the septic, the septic's 1,300 yards. So it'll be in, it'll be brought in over the course of time. The applicant, the applicant is, is going to be, is also the homeowner. He's moving in with his, with his family. So there is a vested interest to be sensitive to the neighbors and truck traffic because they are going to be living there. So truck traffic will mostly be during the day. It'll be a couple of trucks, it'll be a couple of trucks, you know, a day coming in. And just, just the way the lot slopes and the way the lot is situated, you can't, you can't be bringing in a ton of fill at once because you have to spread it and shape it and then stabilize it as you go. So it'll be over the course of time.
And as far as cutting of trees, do you foresee, I mean, like it looks like the one neighbor's completely clear cut and then the neighbor to the above seems like he's able to maintain the woods. Do you have any idea what they may or may not do there?
The area of the septic, I mean, obviously the areas of grading will be cut. I'm assuming that vegetative buffers are always important, especially when you're coming into an existing subdivision. And again, the applicant is also going to be the owner. So usually we try to keep our limits of disturbance tight along, along those, those property lines. So it's something that we can do is, you know, we can have a flagging of that limit of disturbance prior to tree clearing just to ensure that we maintain that buffer as, as we can.
Any questions or comments from our professionals?
I'll jump in on this quick. The, I think Brian did a very good job about trying to fit everything in and meet the regulations on this lot. Our biggest concern is with construction. So our comments generally related to what items you were just talking about. So we requested along the side property lines that they put up a construction fence, get that up right in the beginning so then we don't have to deal with encroachments across the, the property line. And then identify a few more areas like the, the matting that he was talking about putting down. We'd like to see that actually on a plan, just so the contractor has a picture of that. We find it easier during the inspections that we can point out a plan and say, here's where you're supposed to put it, not just put it where you think. So we'd like to see that. And then at the, the bottom of the lot, the, the existing swale that he's talking about, it does drain the other lot. So we'd like to ensure that that always stays open and the contractor isn't in that messing around because that would create a drainage problem for the, the neighbors.
Got it. Fair enough. Standard stuff.
So the total amount of fill you're bringing in, total, total is what, Brian?
I think we started at 2,800 and we're 2,179.
Okay.
So since our initial presentation, I think we reduced it by over 700 yards.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who are here to speak for or against the project? Yes, sir?
Aye.
Would you please come to the microphone and if you would be so kind, sign in your name?
Hi, my name is Steven Ashudo. I actually live in that house on the south. So really some more just questions. This is kind of the last plot of land that's, you know, not, you know, doesn't have a house on it. Happens to be where a lot of the wildlife live because it's the last woods and there's a very large slope down. So really questions on any analysis of the wildlife impact as well as, you know, the drainage issues that was mentioned, I think could be, could be significant by, because the lake is sort of right below that line there. So those are really just questions there.
We'll ask Brian to come back and respond to that if you, if you would.
Yes, so when we, when we initially started with the town and developing our plot plan, obviously this, this site has some grade to it. So we went ahead and did a drainage analysis of the contributing area to this home site, taking into account off-site properties, the areas associated with it and how the drainage flows work its way across our property. So we took that along to account. We designed a swell that, that meets nearest to DEC guidelines as far as design capacity. And in doing so, the DEC speaks to controlling velocities because that's what really starts to destroy sites is, is soil removal. So in doing so, we, we designed a swell that is, again, riprap lined, it's going to have check dams on it, it's going to slow the water down. And as the town engineer says, this is a very detail-oriented plot plan where every step is identified, where we, again, where we start down below, we stabilize and as we work up the hill, we stabilize, just to, to be sensitive to, make sure we don't impact our neighbors. So, you know, a typical plot plan may be one or two pages. This will probably be upwards of five pages with details, how to install matting, how to install the check dams and the spacing behind those, those measures.
Anything you can say about wildlife issues that were raised by the gentleman?
Specific to wildlife, I mean, this, this project is, it's an existing lot. It went through the seeker's process, it went through the subdivision process back in, in 78. So there was a review of this property in front of the planning board, which created the subdivision. There was analysis done by, you know, the health department, making sure that, you know, this lot could support home construction. So specific to, to wildlife, you know, this is an existing lot. We are sensitive to natural features on site. So again, I, I think to, in order to preserve as much as possible while, while developing this piece, you know, limiting the disturbance on our disturbance line and making sure that it's flagged prior to disturbance is, is the best way we can do to ensure that what we show on the plan actually happens in the field.
There's no like endangered species like the turtles or the bats or anything like that here?
Nothing came up in, in our analysis. Again, it's an individual plot plan, so it's not subject to, you know, when you go through a subdivision where it's a bigger development plan and things are looked at at a much closer, a much closer level.
Brian, if there's tree clearing, I'm assuming you're going to follow though whatever the guidelines are to prevent any, any bad issues, right? Even a single lot with clearance, we would have to follow the same guidelines.
I mean, technically, you're supposed to.
Any other questions or comments from members of the public?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gonzalo Quintana. I live in the other house. And I'm just concerned about drainage, first of all. How is that going to affect the bottom of my property? And if there's going to be any blasting because it's very rocky in there? And then how long is it going to take to bring all this fill in? We are a cul-de-sac and I'm just concerned about all the traffic, the truck traffic through there. Those are my three questions.
If you could just sign in for us.
I certainly can, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
And just to be clear, he, he addressed some of the concerns, but are you familiar with some of the nomenclature that he was using with regards to the drainage?
Well, I had a little bit of a hard time hearing.
So he mentioned riprap. So most of them will be lined with stone and then damming as they, as they go down. So more than likely sounding, you know, sounds like it'll be an improvement over what was there, but I'm sure Brian will get up and...
Well, that would be good.
Address.
Thank you. Otherwise, we welcome our new neighbors.
Okay, Brian, if we could welcome you back.
I'm back. Yes, again, this is not something that we just, we pull out of a hat specific to how we design these. There's, there's state guidelines that we have to follow through the New York State DEC. They have a stormwater manual that keeps growing bigger and bigger. So this lot follows the guidelines within that manual and how to control runoff, how to control drainage and how to design it. So this, this plot plan and this development design follows those guidelines. Specific to blasting, no blasting is proposed. Again, this lot naturally falls off, so that's why we extended our walls down. Believe it or not, we are actually going to have to bring grade up slightly for the basement because there is such a large drop off. So no blasting is anticipated or proposed. If anything, there may be, there may be some hammering for the water line because the, the well is located just north of the house. So I'm not sure how, how deep the rock is there. There may be some soil there, but typically your water lines require five foot of fill or five foot of cover. So if we have to hammer to put that, that well line in, I, I would assume that would be our only hammering. Everything else, if we do encounter rock, we're most likely going to be pinning to it with our foundation.
And the timeline for the project?
Timeline for this, you're probably nine months to a year, just knowing the building season and how the weather is approaching. So I would assume we would probably start with our septic, we'd obviously start with our septic first, get that stabilized. If weather and timing permits, we would try to get the foundation in this year. But again, mother nature has, kind of dictates that schedule.
Is that for the entire project or six to nine months for truck traffic?
Well, I think it's, I would, I would say it's over the, the 12 months just because you're going to have different phases. So, you know, when this project first starts, it's, it's, you're going to have truck traffic related to installing that septic. And then as we work... And then as we work our way up the hillside, there'll be the installation of the foundation. You know, when you install your foundation, you're not going to finish grade around it right away. You know, you don't want to make sure your walls, you know, reach capacity. And then as you get toward more of a final stage. So in the spring, I would assume that there'd be a resurgence of truck traffic as we try to final grade around the site. So it wouldn't be all at once, but it would be spread over time.
How accessible is the site right now? Like, if guys were to start working there, doing some site work and stuff, are they able to pull off the road?
Yeah, there's probably about, I mean, the grade does drop off, but I would say, like, the first 30 to 40 feet, you're going to have an ample staging area to make sure that there's no trucks on the road and that machines can work their way down the site.
So they wouldn't impede people's ability to pass by?
Right, right. And again, this is a front-load garage, so our front is going to be open and exposed, so we would be using that entire, almost width of that front yard for staging and having vehicles there. And with that, you know, there's, there's construction entrances that we put in, so there's some really heavy riprap that we put in right off the edge of pavement to protect the pavement and also keep the soil off the road. So there'll be mechanisms in place to ensure that soil doesn't make its way onto that road. And then typically, what happens, as outlined in our plans, is at the end of every day, you know, we make sure that the road doesn't have, you know, soil buildup on it and it's kept clean.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, I will then read a resolution of amended subdivision plat.
And John, just before you read, you're going to be striking-
The number of yards.
You're going to be striking, modifying the number of cubic yards and also striking number three.
Okay.
From the conditions.
Got it. So this is for Russo Shenandoah Lake Estates. Name of applicant, Ryan Russo. Location, Appalachian West. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the applicant is applying to amend the existing subdivision plat for Shenandoah Lake Estates to allow for an increase in fill materials required by the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health to construct a septic system. And whereas the applicant is proposing 2,179 cubic yards of additional fill. And whereas, to minimize the amount of additional fill brought to the site, the proposed new house will be a maximum of three bedrooms in size. Whereas the applicant will provide a sediment and erosion control plan for the site satisfactory to the town engineer. Whereas the applicant will provide a chain of custody for the proposed fill material. Whereas the planning board determined that the proposed action is a type-two action under seeker, no further seeker reviews required. Whereas the planning board opened and closed a public hearing for the proposed subdivision amendment on August 20, 2024. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants amended subdivision approval as shown on the amended subdivision plat titled Shenandoah Lake Estates, subdivision Lot 18 Russo, prepared by Dan Stokosa Engineering PC, dated October 8, 2023, and last revised June 28, 2024, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the bedroom count of the proposed house is limited to three bedrooms. And number two, no more than 2,179 cubic yards of fill may be brought to the site. And number three, an escrow in the amount of $5,000 shall be established for an environmental monitor during construction.
And subject to the approval of the Department of Health?
Number four? Number four?
I see we're striking three.
Oh, we are striking.
So item number four, further condition is the approval of the Department of Health. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board should cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. May I have a second for this resolution?
Second.
And a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Sarah Bledsoe.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donna Pepe.
Aye.
John Giavagnoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman. I'm an aye. Passed. Thank you. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is landmark union.
Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Daniel Steinhegen, I'm a member of the firm of BD Padavano in Montvale, New Jersey. On behalf of Cormar Howell Hopewell, excuse me, LLC, you have a landmark union, 793 Route 82, this is the Chase Bank. We were here, I think, in May for sketch review. Now, we've submitted the application, and we are now here for a declaration of completeness. And we're asking the board to declare itself a lead agency. I have site engineer Matt Checha and David Jaffe, our project architect, here to answer any questions, but I'd have Matt come up and kind of go through where we are, what we're doing. We've gotten some review letters in the last couple of days, and I'd like Matt to just run through the plan and-
So just for the record, Matthew Checha with Stoneful Engineering and Design, looking at 584 Broadway in New York, New York. So I have an aerial here, just to give us some context of where the site is. I'm sure most of us already know, but it's in the Hattonville-Hopewell Junction, fronting Main Street, which is a New York State right-of-way, State Route 82. Just to the, east of the site is the Pizza Village. To the west of the site is the old hot dog stand, I believe. And then further in the rear of the site is the, it's just like a forested wooded area. Existing today, the site is vacant with just old building foundation remains and an old parking lot that's mostly just overgrown with just, you know, advanced shrubbery, I'll say. In the rear of the facility, or the lot itself, is just a small pergola that we're proposing to remove, as well as all the foundations and asphalt components that's there today. If I swap to the site plan, we're proposing a 4,100-square-foot Chase bank, thank you, a 4,100-square-foot Chase bank with 22 parking stalls and a bypass lane and a drive-up ATM for that use. You know, what we're doing is we're, the existing curb cut that's there today will stay there and it will remain. Based on some of the feedback we've received from the board and the professionals, it's noted that since this is a state route, we're going to need to get a DOT approval to do that work. That's understood. We actually proactively submitted to them already, and they came back with a positive recommendation for the project. We can review the curb cut, or the technical warning strips and the crosswalks and all that stuff, but they're still reviewing the plan in more detail, specifically the stormwater. But they've approved just the work that we're doing in fronting the property. That includes the curb cut itself. We're improving that based on the state requirements, and we're actively improving the sidewalk directly in front of that as well. As you can see, the site's fairly narrow, but what we're planning on doing is adding all the amenities that Chase likes to have, like the ADA stalls, you know, a trash enclosure, full circulation around the site, et cetera. With doing so, however, you know, we need to seek a little bit of relief based on the 25-foot front yard and 10-foot wide side yard buffer requirements. Just due to the site constraints, it's challenging to provide all those amenities while meeting those criteria, so that's something that we'll seek relief from the zoning board. But we do have the opportunity to plant a lot of plants here, right? We have various plants on the western side of the site, in the front yard, around the building foundation, and then some green space in the rear of the facility as well. I know lighting was a discussion, and just specifically for this site being a Chase Bank, New York State security lighting requirements comes into play. They're typically more, you know, aggressive than local municipal requirements, but Chase takes this very seriously when providing security standards for their branches. So even though we are meeting the town requirements, we are meeting the state requirements, provide security lighting for the main entrance, where there will be, you know, access 24 hours for an ATM in that vestibule, and then the drive-up ATM as well. So per state requirement, we are required to have those foot candles and photometrics as such. With that, we're seeking additional relief from the zoning board for, I believe, it's the maximum five-foot candles on the property and .1-foot candles on the property line. We do take measures to make sure that we limit the spill-over on the property adjacent to us. We've provided some additional plantings and a fence to limit that spill-over. We can get into the more technical questions, you know, about utilities or more aggressive conversations about lighting, should the board or professionals want to go in further. But, you know, this, just before I hand it over to the architects for them to present, you know, the building, I just wanted to mention that, you know, this gives us the opportunity to redevelop this site that's been vacant for quite some time, and we're just excited to put something in front of the board and work with the professionals and the town to make something a little bit more attractive that's there today, so that the neighborhood is a little bit more developable.
Before we do that, do you want to touch on some of the comments that we got last time, parking, the cross-access issue?
Yeah, I mean, we saw, like, the cross-access plan, I guess, to connect, you know, everything together, which makes sense. But specifically for our site, you know, required parking is 17. We're providing 22, which is like essentially the bare minimum that Chase requires for their branches, just due to, you know, some employee parking as well. So 22 is like kind of their minimum. If we were to introduce an additional curb cut, you know, on the northwestern or northeastern side of the site, it would limit the amount of parking and circulation around the site. So we don't want to lose spaces as part of that development. So it's just something that we're considering. There's a lot in those memos that we'll work with the professionals and board on, but that's one thing about the cross-access that we were just reviewing internally and after the sketch plan conversation back in May. What were the other items?
Well, the other one, we were, there was a question about, were we overparked?
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So I do have one question while you're at the microphone.
Sure.
Being that the site is so narrow, have you considered the 360-degree accessibility for the fire access and, you know, safety equipment that can make its way around the site?
Yeah, David and I had a conversation a couple of days ago, I believe. I requested the information from Jackie. She provided the turning movement for the truck. You know, we're working through it internally. I do have a truck turn for a standard fire truck, I'll say. That's not an aerial apparatus that circulates the site, but I want to get a little bit more information from the, you know, from the fire advisory committee, so that we could graphically show it more presentable, if that's needed. But what we spoke about was potentially just having, you know, if that circulation doesn't seem feasible, right, other options, such as just entering the facility and then backing out, or fighting the fire on the street. We don't want to get too close to the building, but it's just something that we have to talk through and work through. We do have a turning movement that circulates the site. It's just, I need to make sure it meets the requirements that the fire advisory-
So based on your comment, then, where you have, like, the drive-up, is there an overhang that overextends the building where a car, you know, that pulls up to the, you know, the drive-up window, so to speak? How much space, is that just one car space width?
I don't know. We have the architects here, they can answer that question a little bit more.
Thank you.
David, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. David Jaffe, Weare Malcolm Architects. Yeah, that shows a better. So that shows our drive-through ATM. We have a small canopy over the front of the ATM. And then I think on the other rendering, we have a canopy small at the front of the building.
How far does it extend out?
So does it come out like the equivalent of a parking, you know, a width of a car or less?
There's also a bypass lane. So the movement that we were reviewing internally before the meeting, just like in the office, it utilized the bypass lane that would be clear of that overhang.
Okay.
That answers the question.
Somewhat. I mean, we'd have to understand the distance, I would think.
Why did that bypass?
Yeah.
12 feet.
Yeah, it needs to be wider than 12 feet.
Well, the overhang doesn't protrude all the way, so they can use a little bit of that other lane as well.
So what's the total width of the access?
What's the setback? And then do we know what the overhang is?
And how wide is the overhang?
Yeah, so you have 20, you have 22 feet.
Yeah.
Of width there to go. Of width, yeah, of pavement width.
And minus the two or three feet?
Right, well, it's 24 feet.
Oh, okay, okay, you did right.
It's tracking the two. So it's plus or minus that and that. I mean, the overhang is-
It's not big.
That's why I was just curious, is it a car width?
The overhang is about a couple of feet.
Or is it just-
It's just for the person who's rolling-
It's just for weather.
Yeah, we understand that.
Hi, I can speak on that. I'm Jessica with Chase. It's a total of two lanes. So we have one lane with a canopy that comes over, and that's for customer interaction, transactions. And then the bypass lane is not covered. We have a little bit of an overhang, which is about, maybe about a foot or two, and that's pretty much it.
So that's what we need to understand, though.
The bypass lane would be access.
I understand, but what we're trying to establish is how far does that overhang come off the building and into the single space?
Two or three feet, so you're going to have north of 20 feet, clear to the sky.
And no island between?
And no island between.
What's the height of that overhang?
So this, this is-
Looks like about 11 or 12.
What's the height of that?
The bottom of the canopy is at 10 feet.
Can you go any higher? Can you go any higher?
Right, got it. It's just a concrete pad.
How tall is the, how tall is the truck?
Right at 10 feet, 10 feet, 10 feet, 8 inches.
We're in that range, but I don't think that canopy is going to protrude out enough where it's going to affect the drive-by.
We'll look at it.
And again, this isn't, this isn't-
Get around it more so.
Or your fire truck hasn't had the opportunity to analyze it yet. You can see that we're utilizing the full lane and only cheating in a little bit of that, of that concrete pad area. The overhang is this dash line in front of there. So you've got about, if I was to guess, to be conservative, five feet plus.
Just for the board's information, our concern with the turning radius was the, as you face it from Route 82, the right rear corner, that seems to be a very sharp turn there.
So I think, I think we would ask the applicant to spend a little bit of time with you prior to the next meeting to kind of make sure that all of your concerns are addressed.
Welcome to our fire advisory meeting, too.
Yeah, and we just want to make sure that their equipment is going to make its way around the site.
Understood.
John, one thing maybe to add, you know, I think you touched on a lot of the comments that I had, but, you know, one of the things is, you know, the current condition of 82 right now is the two-way left-turning lane in the center. Where this driveway is located, if there was a car traveling westbound in that lane to take a left into the bank, it effectively seals off the driveway for the bagel place. So one suggestion I made in my comments is that they should look at considering putting the entrance to the east of the lot and leave the exit on the west of the lot. You would get rid of that problem. I think you'd improve the circulation for the fire apparatus, and it might solve two problems in one shot.
Just spitball ideas, like, you know, we're open to any suggestions, obviously, and, you know, try to make something that's workable for all departments and parties, right? The problem we see with that is we create a dead-end parking, we lose spaces. So if we were to move the stall, or if we were to move the entrance further north, I'll say, or further east, right, we would want to maximize the parking, adding stalls to the left, right? But then you create a dead-end, because the bypass is there. So you're creating like a do-not-enter, but you're also not maximizing your space. You have to kind of back out and do a K-turn out of the site, right? You'd also be losing about six stalls with doing that, which comes close to the actual requirements that we need is 17.
Would you actually lose that many spaces? I mean, I'd like to see that on paper, because I think-
Yeah, I mean, I can, we can, we can look at it in more detail.
I think it's important, I mean, you know, Route 82, it's a textbook example of poor access management. And for us to, like, you know, have an opportunity to make an improvement to that access, you know, we have to look at that pretty carefully, because, you know, it's, you know, it already, the area is a high accident thing. I mean, one of the things, I don't know if the DOT asked you to look at accidents there, but again, it's something that's got to get looked at pretty closely. And again, if we, if there's got to be a trade-off between- And again, if we, if there's got to be a trade-off between a parking space, you know, I think the board can consider that. But we, I think it needs to be looked at because, you know, it definitely creates a conflict.
Understand that.
And then if, you know, if, if the, if it's compounded by, you know, not being able to provide adequate access for the fire apparatus, that might, again, it might solve two problems.
I have a question for the architect, if I may. Have you had an opportunity to be introduced to our design standards that we've recently developed?
Yes.
And is that something that you'll be looking at with regards to the exterior?
Yeah, we looked at design standards, we look at Chase standards, and we feel that this building is close to the contemporary style for a new build, per your guidelines. We're using sustainable materials, we're using wood, stone, flat roof. Our parapet majority is at 17 feet throughout the building. We are going to be, sustainability is very important for this client and we're going to be pursuing a lead certification for this project, which is important to us. But regarding the style, we kind of went through the bullet points, the do's and the do-nots, and, and this is what we feel fits.
That's it.
Yes.
John, the, is, is the Chase Bank that was, I don't know, somewhat recently built in Fishkill in the Panera Bread Plaza there, is, is that the same architecture of this building?
The existing building that's about five lots down is, is a, an older contemporary style, but it doesn't really fit, I think, the, the look and feel of the planning guidelines that we see today. So we're going closer to the materials and the look and feel of the town.
You were asking about the Fishkill.
Yeah, there's a new one in the town.
Same thing, yes, yes.
Okay.
To be clear, the Chase Bank five lots down is not remaining.
No.
It's closing. If and when this one were to open, or is there going to be an overlap?
It won't be an overlap. Usually the way that we structure our new builds.
Can you just come to the mic? I'm sorry, even though we can hear you.
I'm sorry.
I'm actually standing in for the gentleman that attends these, but, hi, I'm Jessica with Chase, by the way, one more time. Okay, the way that works is when we're relocating an existing branch, we make sure that the time that we close down the existing branch, that the other one is up and running. So there is no overlap, to answer your question.
The existing branch, how many parking spots are there? Because it doesn't seem like enough, it doesn't, doesn't seem like anywhere near the amount that's being proposed here at the, at the existing one.
Yeah, along with your standards, our, your, like your, you know, everyone's standards change with time. Our standards have also changed. So that's just pretty much where we are with parking requirements. But we did, we're receiving your comments and we're going to go back to the drawing board and, and, and look at that again and see what we can work out.
Is there an issue, is there, the, the branches are a little bit different?
The, the existing branch is around 2,000 plus minus square feet. This is almost double that, so there's different parking requirements for the, for the two sites.
And so to your question.
So I guess the question is, how many are at the existing site now? Do you know?
Eight or nine, I think.
I think it's about eight or nine.
Shocked. Thank you.
Okay, are there questions or comments from board members or I'll actually pass the ball to our professionals?
Okay, first, I think they asked us to declare our intent to be lead agency and so they can circulate for the purposes seeker, so let's do that before I forget.
So good idea. I'll accept a motion to declare intent to be named lead agency.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So I know, we had met a while back, and this site is a very significant site in, in Hopewell. It's one of the only sites that will have been redeveloped in the last, I've been here since 2008. There have been, there's been two projects done in Hopewell, significant projects. One was the Chase Bank parking lot and the other was a gas station. So this is the first real new build in, in Hopewell and it is seen, that location is seen as a gateway location to the hamlet. So the architecture is very significant for the, for the town. And also, I think we've shared with you some of the proposals for some of the traffic improvements that are likely to be coming online in the next several years, including a roundabout very close to the location of the entrance to the bank and a bypass road and connection to the plaza behind you. So certainly we would expect that there'd be some sort of easement granted because we know that there's going to be a road going through there at some point and we're trying to connect the parking lots because once there's a roundabout, it would be very difficult. You wouldn't be able to get on and off unless you were able to connect through. You'd have to go all the way around the roundabout to get back to locations. So we're basically trying to anticipate that that's what's coming and, and plan accordingly. So we will, we will want to see connections through wherever possible. And, and we may have to have a meeting, like maybe we could all meet and kind of talk to some of that and look at some of that and we can share some of the future plans that are, are likely to happen here. But with regards to architecture, we are looking or, or seeing this as a gateway location and just like your standards have changed, our standards have changed as well. And we're, we're really looking to improve the aesthetic of the hamlet and because this is one of the first buildings that will be modified in a long, long time, we'll be looking for that, we'll be looking for an aesthetic that kind of sets a tone for, for our revitalization. To that end, we also need to refer to the ARC. We have an architectural review council that we'll need to review, so we'll, we'll, we'll do that as well. But we can also speak to that offline and, and with the ARC. Some other comments that I have are just that certainly we're, we're concerned about parking and parking in front of, you know, ideally we wouldn't be seeing parking right in front of the building when we come in. I, I understand your constraints, so I think we would like to talk also about some of the, some of the way we're, we're making that parking lot look and the aesthetic, some of the landscaping. We're also considering the lighting plan. Five-foot candles is the, the ATM standard, that's the requirement for the safety law. We're also a Greenway compact community, which has, has lighting standards I think you should probably look at. We understand that you have to meet the New York State guidelines, but we're trying as hard as we can to work with gas stations and other locations throughout the town to lower their lighting levels and we've been doing that pretty, pretty regularly. So we've been looking at a five-foot candle maximum. So I think that that's what we would be the standard here and we'd, we'd probably like that only if the location's where it absolutely needs to be, like in front of the ATMs and maybe in the vestibules when you first enter. We'd also be looking at lowering the temperature. I think you have, I think you have 4,000 Kelvin is your temperature. We want to go down to 2,700, 3,000, around that range with our LED lighting. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I can think of off the top of my head. I also have comments from Dutchess County Planning, which I just got yesterday, so I can give those to you. I'll have Jackie forward those to you.
We have that one.
You got them, great. Let's see. Signage, I know you guys have submitted, I think, or submitted some sort of signage plan, so that will have to be done. Ideally, that would be done as part of the site plan review as well. Okay.
There was also additional relief, I believe that was mentioned in the engineer's report regarding the signage, but something we'll consider as well.
Okay. Yeah, signage, you know, we can work especially if it has to do with wayfinding and locating, you know, we, we appreciate that that's necessary and it, and it actually helps with traffic flow. So the signage, we can also talk offline if you want to explain what you want to do with that. Let's see, just looking at the Dutchess County, if I missed any of their comments. You know, I think originally when, I know that when folks came in initially and had a, had a little pre-meeting, there was discussion about our hopes for, for some of the things, the changes that we're hoping to see in the hamlet. We had talked about the idea of, of creating more mixed-use buildings. I know that that, the second story was something that you said you'd never do with your banks, but we do want to see architecture that can sort of help us get to our goals with what we're doing with the revitalization of the hamlet.
Do you want, do you want to just speak briefly to that? Do you have any more?
Nope.
Do you want to have me speak to the, the, there was the comment in the county's review letter about second-floor residential?
Yeah, I think, I think we, that had been addressed previously. And so I, I think I understand where that's going. I just want to say that, understanding that we're still looking for architecture that.
Understand. We want, we wanted to keep the main parapet in scale with the rest of the lots adjacent, but we also did some highlight pop-ups in and out to highlight the entrance of the buildings and the corners of the buildings and that kind of gives some scale to the building as it relates to.
Yeah, I would say that, well, I mean, you'll have to speak with the ARC, but I would say that we're not as concerned about matching the architecture of the existing buildings surrounding the.
No, it's scale. I'm sorry, talking about scale.
Scale, okay, yeah, I understand that.
So as, you know, as the building's features kind of increase over the main parapet, that kind of can carry through adjacent lots regarding second floors.
And just so you understand that, that there is zoning in place now that will potentially allow second floors and we are seeing a couple of applications in for taller buildings.
Other comments, mayor professionals?
Yeah, I would say, based on the discussion tonight, most of our comments will need to shake out after any changes of layout, changes, circulation, whether you get the variances or not, but I think that probably that's going to be best to attack our comments after that.
Okay, great. I think we can have all five conversations to review anything that's, that's needed in your letter.
I'm just going to add that if you, if you did have some correspondence with the DOT, if you could provide that to the town.
Sure.
And, and who those contacts were, that would be great. The, the crosswalk and the detectable warning fields, those things I think just details we can work out, but since there, there are some projects going on, there's some projects in design a little bit further down on 82, where we just want to create, again, the same aesthetic for the, for the hamlet and the same, you know, the same facilities too. So if we're not going to use detectable warnings at, at certain driveway crossings or we're not going to, we're not going to have crosswalks maybe in the driveways, we don't want you to put them in, so we can just work that, work through that. Again, the, the driveway configuration, I think we need to take a look at. I agree with, with Michelle that if, you know, it might be worthwhile for us to have a little working session to try to review some of, well, at least to let you, give you a little bit more in-depth understanding of the vision that the town has with, with the roadway network and, and how your site might be able to integrate into that. I think that would be, be very beneficial, so.
And just so you know, I don't know if you're aware that we're in the process of doing, updating our comprehensive master plan. Right now, we're, we're close, sort of at the tail end of it, but we expect to have some things towards the beginning of next year in final form, which may address some of the design issues as well.
Okay.
And so before we forget, I'll, I'll accept a motion to refer the applicant to our ARC.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then regarding the front and side yard variances, that would be taken up with the zoning.
And it sounded like the, the professionals wanted that to happen before.
Well, I think we need to see, I mean, I don't want to refer them to the zoning board too early in case there's some changes to the site.
It may be just a teeny bit premature.
Okay, I, I wasn't, yeah.
I think maybe we should have our, our meeting and then we can, we can do that because I don't want you to go there and bounce back and forth.
Can, can I just ask? I understand you have a kind of a set look and feel for your branches. Do you have a layout that's a two-story layout?
It's not, it's, it's not.
Could you step to the microphone, please? Thank you.
No, it's not something that we typically do. We have some branches in New York City, but they are existing. They are two stories, maybe like, you know, a, a first floor and a lower level, but nothing.
We're not suggesting you use the second floor.
I'm sorry?
We're not necessarily suggesting you use the second floor now, but to Michelle's point, you've driven down Main Street. We're not looking for that. The way that it looks right now is where we don't want it to continue to go. So if you were to build something that is maybe more traditional in style or even more modern in style, but doesn't look like that, the goal would be that the rest of Main Street will then start to feel the need to improve. So if you build something that looks exactly like what's already there, but a more modern version, we're not going to improve anything necessarily.
Got it.
But if you are willing and able to meet our master plan goals in terms of, we want second story, we want something much, much more welcoming, updated, modern, friendly, Main Street-like, then we have the ability to hopefully continue to improve down the rest of Main Street. If that makes sense. So we're not saying that you need to build something that is actually a usable second floor today, but maybe in the future, if you decide to move on from this location and, you know, planning, we can make use of that space or maybe there is a way in the future for you to make use of that space. But to break free from the current look and feel of Main Street to continue to make improvements and make it feel much more welcoming and like a Main Street.
Well, and just a comment, though, doubling the size of the branch, if you, you wouldn't have to necessarily have the footprint you have right now, you'd have a lot more space to move your parking around if you went to a second floor.
So true.
So I, whether you use it or not, it's just a suggestion if it's something to look at.
You're going to condense the footprint, obviously, and raise the.
Go back and talk about that.
Anything else for the applicants? Any questions or comments?
I was just going to throw out, just based on what I was hearing, a compromise may be a story and a half with some faux windows or something like that, that's just not usable at all, but you give the appearance from the street, give it a little bit more of a softer hamlet-type feel, maybe a little bit of metal roofing mixed in. I think that's maybe what, what you're thinking could soften that.
Yeah, and, and some flares, that's elevated.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a, there's a lot of things that could be done with maybe a little bit more of a roof structure to it.
Anything for us?
I think that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. We look forward to seeing you again soon. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Mama Mia Restaurant LLC. Good evening.
I'm looking to put a three-car garage in the back of my property for personal use. So I, I believe you's all got the, the paperwork on it?
Yeah.
We did. And, and you'd say this is going to be for personal use?
Yes. So commercial use, that's for my cars in there.
Okay.
So just by way of introduction, this is a, a business-owned site, however, there's a residence and a business on it, so this particular garage would be used as part of the residential use on the site?
Okay. And does the existing home have a garage at all?
No, no, well, I was informed by Matt that it was a garage back then, 1971, a two-car garage. I bought the property 31 years ago and I never seen a garage. I have the map plan that the original owner gave me.
Couldn't find it.
All that was there was a little shed. A little shed that, when they made these plans, they said a little shed ought to be demolished. When I bought the property 31 years ago, the shed was like falling apart. I got all Matt, the, my plow guy kind of knocked it down and I told him he could take whatever materials was inside, was like mason materials, like rods and all kinds of stuff, but was never in a garage, not that I know in 31 years.
And if I may ask, do you live in the home?
Yes, I live right next door from the restaurant, yeah.
And so because this is an amendment to the site plan, it will require that we refer the applicant to the ARC and requires a public hearing. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, it technically depends on whether or not, yeah, typically a, a amended site plan requires a public hearing and it depends on whether or not the planning board would determine this to be a minor site plan amendment or they would like to see a public hearing with the structure. It is in a busy location of town where, and I don't know how visible it'll actually be from the road, but.
It won't be visible. I wouldn't think so, not there.
You're not going to see it from.
And the neighbors won't see it.
You're barely going to see it from the road because it's, the, the way, where I want to put it is from the gravel to the garage is 40. it, from the gravel to the garage is 40 feet. From there to the road, I believe I measured right on my plans, is like 280 feet.
And it's going to face, the garage doors are going to face.
Face the parking lot.
Perpendicular to.
To the parking lot, yes.
376.
Yes.
This would need to be referred to the ARC, however, because it's in a business district.
Okay.
So regardless of whether or not you've determined if it needs a public hearing, if it's a minor site plan, you can waive the, minor site plan amendment, you can waive the requirement of a public hearing, but regardless, it needs to go to the ARC for.
Okay. Well, so let's start with, I'll accept a motion to refer the applicant to the ARC.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So with regards to the question of whether this is a minor site plan amendment, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, would you agree? I'm sorry, Matt?
Just one other comment, that it also is going to need a 210-square-foot variance from the zoning board, due to the size.
Okay.
So it needs to be referred.
So it's greater than three cars, there are going to be more space than just the three.
It's 960 square feet, but the footprint of the residence limits the size that he can have. It's 750, the greater of 750 or 60% of the footprint of the dwelling, so that's going to require that extra variance.
Okay.
So I just wanted you to add that referral also.
So, I'll accept a motion to refer the applicant as well to the zoning board.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the question of a public hearing, I think, you know, this would seem to be fairly minor to me, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board as to whether you think we can waive the requirement of a public hearing.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that, as long as the ARC is comfortable with the plan.
And this will also need a public hearing before the ZBA, just because they're not even waived their public hearing, so either way, they're going to have a public hearing.
Okay, okay, gotcha, great.
And there's no houses next to it, right?
No, there's no houses. The one next to me is the old Schwartz, which is a shop, which Matt's in it, and then the nearest house from here is probably maybe 400 feet, maybe longer than that. And then you got it used to be Cachi, the A1 lawmower.
Yes.
You know, and that's, again, 400 feet from, they won't even see the garage, because we have trees all the way around the property line, you know, and the property's low landscape, there's trees completely all the way around the property line.
Got it. So, it's the consensus of the board that we will not require a public hearing from the planning board perspective, as we understand it, you will be doing that with the zoning board.
But we do need to coordinate the review then, right? So we need to.
What is that?
Well, will she accept that as a take to action?
So, you know, and we'll circulate.
That's A1, that's the A1 garage.
Okay.
It's normal, we'll probably require the coordination.
Got it.
I know, but I think.
So, could I have a motion to declare intent to be lead agency?
Still moved.
We're declaring intent to be lead agency. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's a lot of motions here for this, for a fairly small project.
I'm new to this, I'm like, you know.
What is the garage-looking building with the one door?
It's going to be three doors in the garage.
I don't know. Existing now, so you're looking at the restaurant?
That's not on his parcel, that belongs to the A1 mower.
Well, that belongs to the A1 lawmower.
That's really far.
And it's three feet off the property line.
Three feet off the property line.
I asked that, too.
That's the way it was when I bought it.
So that was like grandfather.
Yes. I wish that was my garage, I won't be building another one.
Wow, that's really close, okay.
Any other questions or comments or issues with regards to this application? If not, we will wish you luck with the other commissions and committees you have to deal with, but I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, I Park Warehouse Development and Water Tank Relocation.
All right, take care.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the consultants and staff. Thank you very much for making your time available to allow us to briefly address the board this evening. My name is Lynn Ward, I'm a principal in I Park. The team that I have with me this evening has Haley Begado of La Bella Engineering, George DiStefano, the architect, and our environmental counsel, Mike Finnegan. Let me step straight into this thing and explain the status and the background to this. This particular project started out life with Lidl, the major German retailer, food retailer, who are desirous of having a large warehouse facility to support the 436 supermarkets that they are rolling out in the northeast of the US. This is how it began, it began some considerable time ago, over two years ago. They got off to a late start, and then they made very good progress with the town. Everything was falling into place, and they retained all their consultants, but this then moved to discussions with the DEC over the wetlands that were on the site. Those discussions meandered all over the board, and in no time, two years had gone by, there was no conclusion to exactly where various monitoring wells were to be placed and how these wetlands were to be handled. And at that point in time, Lidl reached their time and their budget mark, and they sought to withdraw. We looked at the situation as I Park, so much effort had gone into it from the point of view of the town, ourselves, and we said to ourselves, this thing is pretty close, they're sitting around watching, and if we can deliver, if we're close enough, and in particular, we think we'd crack the DEC nut, if we can deliver this, they have no alternative, this is a high-value project, and they will be back. This is the best move for everybody. So that is how come we are here this evening, in anticipation that we will manage to get through this, having already, as I say, accomplished the DEC component of it, and Mike Finnegan will talk a little more to that, but in that anticipation, that it'll take us a little while longer, that we'll be able to get this thing done, then we believe that they will come right back to the table. So that is the exact status of the project. Once we took over, we stepped into the SEQA process again, and in fact, one of the consultants to the town, one of the engineering consultants, made the suggestion that since we already had an application in for moving the water tank, we might put both of these applications for simplicity into one. That's precisely what we did. We submitted a long-form EAF, we took a new look at the traffic, and I know that the traffic engineer will not have had the opportunity to look at it, because we only recently submitted the traffic study, but we took a new look at the traffic, AKRF did for us a generic traffic study, I can only call it that, and we also dealt with the wetlands. So what I would like to do right now is ask Mike Finnegan to discuss that aspect of it, since that took us so much time to resolve. Then I'll come back and discuss the other intricacies of this application. Thank you.
Good evening. When we started this odyssey, I actually had more hair, and it wasn't gray, but such is the way we deal with the DEC. So, as you can imagine, there are myriad of interests, there are myriad of issues involved there with the wetlands, which is where we started. The process began with the thought that maybe the stormwater could be managed off-site, that was a request of the town. We took that to the DEC, it was rejected soundly. We took another proposal to the DEC, that was rejected as well. In any event, we've had a number of iterations with regard to the wetlands issues on the site. To make a long story short, where we sit today is, there's only about one-eighth of an acre of the entire site that is now within the buffer zone. There is no building within the wetlands area, the mapped wetlands area, and I will not speak for the DEC, I will simply say that what we have gotten from the DEC to date is, they have no further issues with our proposal with regard to wetlands. So once there's a, you know, a fully completed application, we expect no issues with regard to the wetlands on the site. With regard to RECRA, which I know the board has gotten all sorts of communications concerning, that's a whole different issue, and it's a can of worms that we're working our way through. We think we have a path to make our way through. It's complicated, because as I'm sure you know, there's a consent order and deed restrictions on the site in the name of IBM, so there, we have to unpack those RECRA considerations and unpack the various pieces of the existing monitoring plan and RECRA permit that is in the name of IBM. It's been so far as everyone has requested a coordinated review, we to date have been coupled with IBM as part of an application process, per the request of the DEC. Where we are today is, perhaps we'll go forward with IBM as a joint applicant on that permit renewal and modification thereto for our purposes, or perhaps we'll be separated. It's my understanding that there's a meeting involving the town and the DEC to be held right after Labor Day, that's the subject of that meeting. We expect that there'll be a favorable outcome. Beyond that, I don't really have much more to comment about the RECRA permit, you've certainly gotten all the communications, so I don't think there's much more to comment about RECRA at this point.
So if I could ask, when you say that you could be doing a joint application with IBM, is that because of environmental concerns there?
Again, it's rather complicated, I'll try to make it as simple as I can.
Yeah, give me the click notes.
There's an existing consent order which wraps in the old deed restrictions, those deed restrictions are subject to renewal, they're actually at this moment in time expired. The DEC requested that we put our application as a companion to the required IBM application for renewal of the permit, which seemed to be a reasonable request, but it's gotten thorny, and there's been a conflation of issues with regard to that. Our issues are different than theirs.
Right.
And so, there is a way forward here, and I think we've identified that, but again, I don't want to speak too much about it, because it really is a function of the town to be dealing with the.
But are there test well monitoring on that particular block?
Yes, there are, and there's a significant reduction in the test wells.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that question, because that's where we were going, is to say that 44 wells becomes 20, becomes eight, and that's where this is going to end.
Okay. So, but would any of them fall inside the footprint of the building?
No. There was one, there was one well that did exist on what was the old landfill site, that would be eliminated.
There'll be no further wells inside the building.
Okay. And then I have one further question, I don't know who it would be for. Say you get through the process, you said that Lidl has kind of stepped away from the table, what would take place if they didn't come back?
We've made application for a generic warehouse. We don't believe that's going to be something that's going to happen, but we've looked at activity, obviously, we think that situation could be resolved.
Okay.
But we have nothing that we're trying to promote.
Right.
We're trying to get Lidl back to the table, it's a significant economic driver, it's a major German corporation with a large number of jobs, and we want them.
So you're just trying to take the baton from them and kind of.
I'm trying to get to the finish line, and then stand there and give them the medal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask our engineer from La Bella to address the project specifically? Haley, thank you.
Hi, I'm Haley Begando with La Bella Associates, civil engineer. This application is for the water tank relocation and 871,000 square foot warehouse. The warehouse will be located on lots four and six, and the water tank will be relocated from lot six to lot seven. Lot seven is shown on the lower portion of the page with the parking lot. Of course, once that tank is relocated, the parking lot will be reconfigured to accommodate the storage tank and the fencing and landscaping around that. The total disturbance for the warehouse project would be around 48 acres. I know that there were comments on the SWIP, how would we consider more than five acres of disturbance? We would request a five-acre waiver and follow Region 3's requirements for all of the cut-and-fill, sediment traps, all other requirements for that waiver. There is a total of 148 truck loading spaces, 129 truck parking spaces, and 340 car spaces. This is in the light industrial zone, so warehouse and distribution is approved use, and it also lies within the Economic Development Overlay District. Our company was tasked with looking at the open consultant and town comments specifically for the landscape and stormwater comments, and we believe that reviewing the Bowler plans and the Bowler SWIP, that those comments can be addressed by adding 25-foot minimum buffers on the west and southern area, adjacent to Lime Kiln, there would be a portion that would be 10-foot minimum, and then allowing 20-foot where possible. There, we are proposing that the employee car parking lot have additional islands for landscapes and trees to be planted in there to meet minimum requirements, and instead of adding tree islands in the trailer parking area, we are proposing a tree buffer around the perimeter of the trailer instead of interrupting that flow of traffic. So, we believe that the landscaping and the stormwater comments could be addressed, and that all other comments can be a condition of approval. I'm going to flip over to show the stormwater figure. The most important comment that we saw for stormwater was that the minimum required water quality volume wasn't being met in Bowler's SWIP. We believe that Bowler can convert some of their underground detention systems into infiltration, like they have in other areas of the site, and that would come along with testing and make sure that they have the existing infiltrations on-site. Are there any other questions?
So are you using any of Lidl's studies, architecturals, any of that sort of thing, or does all of this have to be original information that you're developing yourself?
We were reviewing Lidl and Bowler's reports for their SWIP, and we provided comments, and we are asking that if this gets approved, and Lidl comes back, and Bowler is their engineer, that our comments and all of the open comments from the town would be held as their site plan approval conditions that need to be met.
Okay.
So the changes that you're recommending, sorry, the changes that you're recommending, are they, do you feel that they're just not impactful to Lidl's original plan? So it doesn't disrupt their site circulation, it doesn't disrupt the plan that they had for the buildings and stuff?
No, the landscaping would be, so for example, along East Drive, instead of putting the landscaping on the property and minimizing the width of their drive aisle or location of retaining wall, our landscape architect department actually recommended that the trees be planted within the East Drive right-of-way, so we wouldn't impact that site plan at all or traffic flow. And then the stormwater, they already had areas drawn out for detention, we're saying convert detention into infiltration, so that was all underground systems, they were already developing in that area, so it's no further disturbance or improvements.
I'm not sure putting trees in the right-of-way is what we would do, so there might still need to be some tweaking, I'm just looking.
Yeah, that was just on that one portion of the site.
Okay.
But it was a suggestion.
But essentially, you're preserving their original intent and their original purpose, you're not changing anything.
Correct, yeah, and then one of the bigger differences, they used to. And then one of the bigger differences, they used to have eight trailer parking spaces, the western side or eastern side, sorry, that further disturbed that 100-foot wetland buffer, and we eliminated those eight spaces. So we're minimizing the disturbance of that 100-foot buffer in there, too.
Gotcha.
What's the overall disturbance now?
Well, it's about six, or an eighth of an acre.
Eighth of an acre.
Yeah.
That time we're just in order to, DEC has gotten not aware of that improvement yet.
Oh, yeah, I did say that.
And you're going to be disturbing about half a day from the plant.
We'd like to clarify that the East Drive right-of-way is private. It's I Park, East Fishville, not Town Road.
Okay.
And so the footprint of the building, none of the other, nothing else is changed?
We did not change the footprint of the building.
I just want to reaffirm what Lori said.
You can see what we're trying to do. We're trying to preserve the major elements so that we can hand that baton over.
Fire advisory.
I understand you're trying to develop this to hand it back to Lidl. What if they don't want it? Is the function of the warehouse going to change? Is it going to be not food storage and be something else?
Or possibly not built?
If it's not built, that doesn't bother me.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just curious on both ends.
And if it's not food storage, it's a chemical storage, you know, that's a big difference.
Yeah, as with any warehouse, you know, we have to go on the assumption we don't know what we'll be in there. It might be groceries, it might be lithium ion batteries, we don't know that, and that becomes a major concern for us, so...
And all of our comments before were based on groceries.
I think we should proceed on that assumption.
Right.
I could never do that.
It's the only assumption I can make at this stage.
Yeah, we're in two different positions here, so...
And DEC would certainly have some comments.
Well, you know, anything, really.
I think we could put a condition on the resolution that states that if the warehouse use changes, it would have to come back to the planning board for review and potential further supplemental study if it was warranted.
That makes sense.
But did Lidl come in to the, into our offices here and have a meeting like at the tail end as to some of the things that were disconnected and this is what they were?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just seem like simple changes.
So are you, are you, what are you looking for from the board at this point? I know that you're in front of the town board for economic redevelopment special permit.
We'd like the architect to have a moment, only because their topic arose, but we are here because we're trying to put this back on track, and we're trying to do it as fast as we can so that while we still have them in the game.
So I believe the last time, Lidl had been in front of us a couple of times, and I believe the last time we were getting close to scheduling, potentially scheduling a public hearing. So I guess once you, usually, our public hearing is the architectural public hearing, so we need to get you with the architectural review council and then, but I think we could potentially schedule you in October, and that way you would have met with the architectural review and you could come back and advertise.
What we're seeking is a speedy path to a public hearing.
Okay, got it.
Then in between now and then, obviously, as you develop your plan a little bit further and you look at all the studies, you can speak with staff internally about what you need to update and what you need staff to review between now and October.
And will we intend to be the lead agency, or does the town board take that role?
The town board, because they're issuing an economic redevelopment special permit there.
They take that role, okay, no problem. And in October, public hearing will work well within the rules, regulations?
I don't see an issue with it. They actually have a public hearing with the town board in two days.
Gotcha, excellent.
And have you been, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't recall if they've been referred to the ARC when they were Lidl. Lidl has, has the ARC seen this submission at all? I know they haven't seen the revised one, but they did see it. Okay, so they probably should go back to the ARC, right?
Yes.
So we'll set you up to try to get in front of the ARC?
Thank you. I can't say now how we appreciate you all trying to work with us on this. It's not a situation I've ever encountered before.
I have one comment. I've not heard the words intrusive work plan, which is part of the soil requirements for the site with the DEC. I know you guys have a meeting coming up with them shortly. I would certainly hope that you're going to make a part of your conversation. That's for the entire property, not just specifically to this location.
Okay.
So can I have a motion to refer the applicant to the ARC?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then in October 15th, 2024 date for a public hearing, will work for you? So may I have a motion to schedule a public hearing for the applicant for our October 15th, 2024 date?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And best of luck.
Okay. All right, the final item on the agenda is Dwayne Hampton.
This is a sketch plan.
This is a sketch plan.
Yes, thank you. Hello? Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Dwayne Hampton, this is my wife, Jeannie. We're both nurse practitioners. Between both of us, we've been nurse practitioners for over 40 years. We're here today to see if we can get approved or at least get an idea of whether we're able to put a wellness place at 2543 Route 52 in Hobo Junction. We currently live in Hobo, we've been here 10 years, we love the community. We are currently kind of wellness, mental health, nurse practitioners, so we are trying to bring that to this new location. We're currently in contract, so before we move, before we move forward, we wanted to make sure that we can put a wellness center in Hobo Junction. Mental health, as we all know, is a big, is a big issue all over the world, so we do mostly virtual. So, so the services will be virtual, we will do some IV drips, some men's wellness, women's health, but mostly all our services will be virtual. I'm quite sure everybody probably seen it is right on Route 52, near the Heritage Square.
It's the old real estate office, right?
Yes, it's the old real estate office right in front of Heritage.
It's been like renovated, you know, exterior like renovated back to its...
Yes, over the last year and a half.
Okay. Now is it a change of use that is going to have that take up?
So the, yeah, so just by way of background, originally it was a real estate office, and then it was going to a chiropractic office, and they were going to do mainly their business admin stuff out of there, but there's, you know, it's a little bit tight on parking over there, so I think now it's being sold to you guys.
Hopefully, yes.
And the only concern, I mean, I think for their particular use, I had Brendan looked at some parking stuff for us, it's a relatively low parking requirement, and the only concern would be, and this would probably just be a condition on the resolution of approval when you, when you got to that point, would be that if they were to change the use at all and go into medical or anything, they'd have to come back to the planning board for review, because it is a little bit tight with the parking.
So it's technically, right now, they would be looking to utilize it as offices as it was, and there's just really just a parking issue?
So typically with a change of use, what brings it back to the planning board? Almost always, not every time, but almost always is the parking for the relook, so that's what's happening here. It's a change of use and we want to make sure that the planning board is comfortable with the parking. And are you using the second floor for office or storage?
Storage.
Storage only. So there's, it's actually got more square footage than you would expect, but there, but upstairs is storage right now, and so...
So how many parking spaces do they have now, do you know?
So I went out today, I count, I think you can get 10 there.
10 plus two handicaps, right?
10 plus one handicap.
Oh, one handicap.
There has to be an aisle for the handicap space.
I think Brendan was out there.
Yeah, I think the only, you know, the only thing related to the handicap space is that you might need to create some space for that. Right, right now, the building isn't accessible, right? There's no sidewalk connection to the parking lot. The, sort of the north side of where the parking goes up along the building?
Yes.
It's at a pretty steep grade. That wouldn't be permitted to be a handicap spot because of the grade.
You mean a spot right here will not be able to, for one, I think you should have a copy, no?
No, he doesn't have it.
I don't have a copy. If you, let me look.
This is, this is the...
Right, so I think, I think this spot right along the building, I don't think the grades are correct. You can check it, but I, I think the grades are too steep to be handicap. Now, there was some room up here where it's level, you might be able to just extend it forward and then connect up the sidewalk. You, I mean, you have to have, this, this has like, you know, it can't be stairs, there's no, the only connection to the doorways is a set of stairs.
Yes.
That, for this handicap parking space to be accessible, you're going to have to connect the sidewalk up, and then, and then choose either one door or both doors to make them accessible.
Okay.
I think that's the only thing, you know, that you, that really would, a modification you'd need to make.
So that's the only thing right there?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, I think to have, you need, it needs to be handicap accessible, right? The facility does. So, you know, to do that, like even, I know there's a door by the, maybe it used to be the garage or whatever.
Yeah.
Like that door has a step on it, that's this big.
Yes.
You'd have to put a ramp there to get, make it that accessible, or the front door, right? It could be either one, but you'd have to have that sidewalk come all the way out to the parking area. The parking spot itself, you know, it needs a sign and stuff, but there's grade requirements on it. It can't be too steep, because if someone got out, there was, say, in a wheelchair, they might just slide down the hill, right? So it needs to be in a level area. You could, and I don't know what, with the space there, I don't think you can maybe level that lot, I think you'd have to extend, you know, at least for the area of where you're going to put that one spot, you'd have to extend the pavement a little bit forward, just to be able to put, to put a handicap space there.
Okay, so if we take care of that, we should be good. I'm assuming?
So I guess that's my, my question is, does this meet our minimum requirements for their use as far as parking, number of parking spaces?
So I asked him to look at the use, and yes, it would, as long as the use is not go into traditional medical, because that's when the parking requirement really increases, so that's why we would have to put on, on a condition, either of their building permit or if they were coming back for a site plan. And it sounds like they might have to come back for site plan because they're going to be modifying the parking.
They are, if, if...
He's willing to do that.
If they have a good meeting here with us for the sketch plan, they will come back to do a plot, a site plan.
A site plan.
Because there isn't one now.
So, so I think what we're saying is, it seems to be a permitted use. What you have to do is, like all the other applicants here, they hired a professional engineer, you hire a professional engineer who can design your parking. And it doesn't seem like it's that intense of a new site plan, really, it's more just making sure your circulation and parking is in place, and any sort of internal changes that you make, you apply for a building permit like you would for anything else.
Okay, but we just need the okay for the permitted use before we...
So do you need, do you need an official determination? Is that what you're asking?
Kind of, I guess we don't want to buy the property and not be able to use it the way we want to use it. That's why we didn't do a site plan yet, because it costs like $3,500. So we did the cheapest way, we did the sketch plan, speak with you guys, and then if we have the okay, then we can do the site plan and architect and everything.
So I think part of it, too, is, I think generally speaking, we're saying, you know, wellness sort of center that you described, that's generally permitted, but what could impact the number of parking spaces is how you're actually using the wellness center. So I think we need some more details about, I know you said a lot of it's virtual, but now you said there might be some IV drips, there might be some patients coming in, is that all...
Just two to three, that's it, mostly.
Right, we're the only providers.
Yeah, it's only us two.
So do you have any other employees?
No.
You don't have any clerical staff?
It's just, everything is virtual.
Virtual...
So you just need to write, like, write it down, right? Two employees, you guys.
I think we...
Your anticipated amount of patients.
I actually have all that in there.
I didn't do that, because I've been back and forth. I think I spoke with him.
Did you write out, so did they write out a full letter narrative or...
Not a full letter narrative, but just like where the patients go.
So maybe, maybe the next step is, because I totally understand that you want to make sure that it's permitted use prior to closing, so I think the next step is then, even before you hire, you know, a civil engineer, put a full narrative together saying, we expect this many patients per day, you know, it's only going to be us two there, and then you can submit something we actually have it where you can pay a fee to at this point, and then you actually can get a determination. So, so that would be, and it's, I don't know the exact fee offhand, but it's reasonable. It's not $3,500, so, so I think maybe that would be your next steps, then you'd have some more comfort about the actual use and closing.
Okay, so we need to write a narrative and give it to...
Jackie.
Jackie? Okay. And when can we come back as far as...
So I don't know that you, so once you're, you would, the only time we would need to see you again is once you have purchased the building and are making the changes to the parking area, then we would need to see the site plan.
Okay.
And do we need to talk at all about lighting or landscaping or those kinds of issues?
That would have to be on the site.
That would be on the site plan. Yeah. There's no lighting in the parking lot today. There's some, there's two lights on the building and one chandelier above the entranceway. So the parking lot's not very well lit. So that's something to consider.
It'd be something you'd want to include?
Yes.
In your site plan, okay?
Okay.
And any signage as well?
I was just going to say that, the signage.
If there's a sign that you're going to locate in a different, I don't know, I think it was out on the road.
There's a mark key there.
A white...
The planning board determines the sign location, so if you're making any changes to that sign location, you would need to show that on the site plan. If you're leaving it where it is, just state that and that's all they need to know.
So soon as we submit the paperwork to her...
And we'll review it with staff internally, we'll get your determination.
Oh, please go.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it. That's it.
What's your timing? Does your timing still work? I mean, the 30-day that you got, or what's your timing still work?
Like, the end of September is hopefully closing, but we wanted to just, we're in contract right now, and just want to make sure that we're doing everything possible that, you know, we're not going to get to the end and then you guys are like...
So if you submit a narrative quickly, we'll, we'll review it quickly, and then if, and then if you get a favorable determination, you can even submit, you know, get a site plan or some, you know, further detailed plan and come back in at the September meeting as well.
Okay.
So we need to come back with the site plan before September 30th?
It's only if you want, it depends, if some people want to get a fully approved site plan before they close on a property, it, it all depends on your contract, and I'm happy to speak with your attorney who's working on it as well, if that would make you...
Okay, great.
Just weigh some concerns.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes tonight's agenda. If there's no further business to be brought before the planning board, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
That's just, that's it.
It was the way they were talking.
Oh, you get to kick out of that. Stay here.